I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey, what are we here? That's Charles.
That's right.
Over here.
It's long here.
We're off some time. A little bit of that box though. I need you over here to kick me under the table.
Something, yeah.
And a switch chair.
A switch chair, right. Hold on, we'll be with you in a second. We're switching chairs, we're doing all kinds of things. I think they put the little chair over here.
That's right there.
Oh yeah, look at they did.
Voice on me.
Oh. Does he want to go to his private table? We know who he is. All right. Mr. Sagarino, are we all set?
Yes, sir.
Over there.
First item on the agenda is a state house update. We've been, this is something that's been done sporadically over the years and we wanted to start up on a more regular schedule, maybe quarterly. We've invited Representative Gordon and Senator Friedman here for an update on what's going on at the state house. We wanted to provide an opportunity for our legislators to let us know what they've been working on, but also to give the board members an opportunity to ask questions and relay any issues we're facing as a town. Unfortunately, Senator Friedman was unable to join us this evening, but she would be happy to attend the next one. And with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Representative Gordon.
Thank you very much.
Sure, Mr. Gordon.
Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman and Selectman, and Town Administrator Sagarino, thank you very much for, this is a good idea and we'll do it quarterly. And as Mr. Sagarino said, I spoke with Senator Friedman and she said next quarter we'll come back and we'll do this together. And for the record, in the legislature, we do the musical chairs thing as well and the freshmen wonder, how'd I get this chair? It happens. So I want to tell you a little bit about what we're doing legislatively and what I've been doing, and like you said, then we'll take some questions. But I'm really proud to be able to report to you that after several years of work, we were able to get the shuttle from Lowell into Burlington on the road. So last week, on October 1, they started running. The first shuttle arrived in Burlington at around 2:30 on Mall Road between the mall and District Drive. And Selectman Runyon was there, Selectman Hogan was there to greet that. We took a picture because it really was long in coming and we really needed to be there to get that ceremonial shuttle in. It's a really important program that's beginning now. We have several hundred job openings in the restaurant industry here in Burlington. The restaurants are struggling because we have low unemployment, so there's a labor shortage, especially when the students are in school, when, in other words, not the summer, not January, when the colleges are out, but the rest of the time, they just can't find work. And so they're not filling the tables because they don't have staff to do it. And we know that story. We have areas in Lowell where there are people looking for work. So we've gone to not only the career centers in Lowell to get access to labor, but we've gone to the Middlesex Community College, which has offered a place to pick up workers there. UMass Lowell, Greater Lowell Tech, a program called UTech, which deals with people looking for a second chance, and other organizations like that to find the, to find the workers. The restaurants have been responding and we have a job fair coming up October 30th, in Lowell, at this place called UTech, so that our businesses can go up there and find workers. So I'm really excited for this program as it begins. The little details, they're running seven routes a day, seven days a week, starting at 2:00 PM, because the Lowell RTA still can handle the morning runs. So it starts at 2:00 and afternoon, it ends at 2:00 in the morning, because our restaurants can close late and they need the cleanup crew. We have four stops here in Burlington. The first is at Wegmans Third Avenue. The second is that between Mall Road, between the Burlington Mall and District Drive. The third is at the Marriott, which also will handle Landana. And the fourth is at Wayside. If we find the need for more stops, we can do that. If we find people aren't getting off or on at a stop, we can do, we can adjust as we go that way too. And our plan is to show some success and expand. Okay, some of the other things that we've done, you may have read, oh by the way, sometimes it's hard to get immediate attention for our local programs, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute. But today, you may have seen the story, the front page story in the Lowell Sun about this program. So Lowell is excited about this, finding work for their residents as much as we are finding workers to take some of these jobs. The Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce has worked extremely hard. Rick Parker has been just really, you know, nose to the grindstone on this. And it's at their site. And anybody watching this, by the way, can go to the BACC website, can find those job openings, and can go to the Middlesex III website and find out how to get onto this bus. So recently, we passed, what you may have read, the Educational Opportunity Act that deals with our public schools, and that's our response to what was called the Foundation Budget Report. It's a, basically, it builds on the program that says every student in Massachusetts is entitled to a certain foundational financial level of an education. The towns and cities that we have, including Burlington, will spend more, will choose to spend more than the foundation budget. That's up to them, but at least everybody gets the same chance. We released that from committee, the Senate passed it unanimously last week. I think in looking through it, the benefits to Burlington will be, will get better access to funding for reimbursement for special education out of district school students, or the students that go out of district, they need transportation money. And so we'll be able to get access to that. And then the school building administration has been getting extra funding, so that I know that we need to work on the boiler at the high school. And there's some more money now in the system, so that, you know, we've applied, we've gotten to the final, we haven't been chosen because another district has, but now with more money, hopefully we can do that. I received a report from the Sidewalk Commission here in town, from Steve Moran. We have a transportation bond bill that's coming out, the governor filed it, and we're going to respond to it. So I'll file an amendment to the Transportation Bond Bill that will put, he's requested a million dollars, and that's what I'll ask for out of that bill. What that does is it authorizes the appropriation. Now then we go to the, to the administration, to the governor, to get that the rest of the way through. We did that with that Middlesex shuttle. So we can, we can, we'll begin working on that again. That said, I do have one request of you for your consideration. And I mentioned, it's hard sometimes for all of us in government, yourselves and me, to get the word out to our local residents about meetings that we organize and events that we have. And you may know that for seven years now, I've held monthly office hours at True North. I do it on Saturdays, usually the second Saturday of the month, at nine o'clock in the morning. We send out press releases, the BCAT has been great in publicizing that, as it has, by the way, in the restaurant shuttle. But, but it's hard, and a lot of residents still come and say they're unaware of it. I've tried to use a sandwich board sign, and I know that there's a lot of emotion in Burlington about things like the sandwich board signs. But when I've done that in Bedford, where you know that I also represent, Bedford has set aside an area of town where they allow applications for a sign, so that the Board of Selectmen will look at the application and decide, is this from an appropriate town-based organization? Is it an appropriate use? Is it restricted in time? It's only, can only be seven days before the event. Therefore, what I'd ask for the Board to consider would be something like if an elected or a government official who has jurisdiction over Burlington, which would be the municipal officials like yourself, state officials like me, maybe our congressman, if we have a public event in Burlington, not a political one, but a public event dealing with government, that we perhaps have some area set aside where we can provide some sort of, call it a sandwich board sign, or if there's a different type of communication that the Board might I think it would be an important opportunity. It's been effective for me. I had someone, it was in Bedford, because that's when I can still do it. A woman came to me just Saturday, just a few days ago, and said, "I knew you were doing this at some point, but I drove past the sign just now and I see you're here now." And so she came to me and she told me about what was bothering her. I'd like to continue to be able to, you know, to have our residents aware that I'm out there, so that they can bring their questions or concerns to me. And again, I'm asking for a consideration of a limited exception to, or a limited opportunity, I should say, to government officials such as ourselves, to be able to have a place. Maybe it's where the flashing sign is for the municipality now, at Simons Park, maybe it's somewhere else. Doesn't have to be where I do the meetings. But it's been helpful.
Okay.
So I would appreciate that.
John, Thomas?
Yeah, sure, yeah. First of all, thank you, Ken. I know you put in an awful lot of time and effort on behalf of Burlington, and I, and I want to thank you for that. I truly do. I see you virtually everywhere, which is, which is good to see. Just circle back to the sidewalk thing for just a quick second and sort of get some clarification on that. This only, this pertains to Route 3A, it's not, this is not money that's going to be available for sidewalks townwide in your transportation amendment.
Right. It's consistent with the request from the committee.
Right. So that, would you, that specific request is for along Cambridge Street, for Route 3A?
Mr. Moran is here, he's on a, an upcoming agenda item.
Thank you for, Steve, for putting all that effort into that. It's a wonderful cause, so thank you for that.
Yeah, so our request will be consistent. I do, he'll tell you that there are a few roads that he singled out to me. I'll let him talk about that then, but I'm going to ask for all of it. And if I can get some of it, if I can get all of it, that's great. But I'm not going to limit the request at this point before any negotiation occurs. And by the way, thank you very much for your compliment, Selectman Runyon. I really enjoy it. I really enjoy representing the people of Burlington and the district.
Pretty evident, Ken, actually, yeah. It's evident to me, and I think I speak for the entire Board, yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Priest.
Yeah. So Gordon, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think it's really important that we try to maintain some sort of open dialogue like this. I think it's great that you came down, I really appreciate it. You know, it's really important for the various levels of government to be talking to each other, and doing it in a public setting where everyone can see it. So it's huge. To that point about public notifications, I think in general, we have a hard time getting messages out to the community.
Right.
And, you know, it's definitely an area of focus that I want to tackle, so I would say that, you know, we'll obviously consider it, and, you know, I think as a part of the overall difficulty of how do we get a hold of people in the 21st century where they pick and choose what they want to see and hear?
Right.
You know, how do we let them know that things are going on at this level? You know, where it's very, very easy for them to put their blinders on of their, you know, everyday busy lives, and not, you know, see us. So definitely a real problem that I'd like to fix, because it's important that people are getting out and talking to us, talking to you, you know, calling Paul here and bothering him during the day and night if they can. Paul, what's your cellphone number? But yeah, no, definitely.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Selectman Priest. I mean, as you do, we use social media, that's effective for some population, for some segment of the population. We are on, we put our meetings on the town website, our office hours on the town website. We go to the COA, and those meetings are on the COA calendar. So we use everything we can. But it seems that at least once a month, I get someone in one of the towns telling me, "I saw your sign." And so sometimes it's just, they just glance at it, and that's what gets certain people to notice.
You can also get those inflatable waving guys too, Ken, that might, that might work.
Maybe that'll be the Overton window, I'll ask you for that, and you'll say, "I just got my sign."
Again, I'd like to echo the Board, thank you for coming out. This is important for us to, you know, have this communication in a public forum, and for the residents to see that we're doing this as well. This may be too early to even ask, but any idea on the ridership, how it's going with the new shuttle bus?
It's only been out there for a week. So we've heard from some employees, in fact, we heard from someone from one of the restaurants that said, they were Lowell resident, they said they were spending $40 a round trip on Uber to get here. Right now, this is a dollar, this is $5 per round trip. Now, it's subsidized. They'll end up being more than that, it'll probably end up being 10 for an express round trip. But right now, it's 5. But imagine an employee paying $40 round trip. How much do you, how much you have to make to afford that? Or the employer, who really wants access to that worker, maybe a very good worker, they can't subsidize that themselves. They wouldn't, they wouldn't be, there's not enough money to be made to do that. And so that's the premise behind this program. So for, right now, for $150, the employer gets seven days a week, one round trip a day, seven days a week. So that's when you do the math, approximately 30 days in a month, do the math, that's $5 a round trip. Because of the, the state has contributed $250,000 over two years to get this off the ground. Once that's used up, it'll, it'll probably go up to, my prediction would be 300 round trip, or seven round trips, once a day. The employers can buy as many as they think they need for their employees, and it's, obviously, no one works seven days, so they can share that with, you know, among their employees, make it affordable for them. So we're beginning to get some, some response, but obviously, it's going to have to start with workers who are already here, because the employers didn't start the hiring process until they knew they had the ride here. And that was what, one thing that held us back for a while was, the employer said, "We definitely have interest, but of course, come see us when you do it." And that's logical. And the employees said, "We definitely want to do this, come see us when it's on the road, because we're not going to take a job on the hope that you can get me there." They want to know that you can. And so that's why the shuttle had to go first, and that's why we knew that it had to run, you know, with light capacity in the beginning, just to prove it really is here, and it's not just, frankly, some government person saying, "This is going to happen, trust me. It has to be here."
Glad to hear that. Just also echo what a couple of the other members said. I've often said it, I've said it to you and I've said it to other people, it's hard to believe you don't live in Burlington, because you're in town almost daily, and almost everywhere we go, I want to see you somewhere. But again, just thank you for being in Burlington and around with the residents. I know you have your office hours, but I know you're willing to meet with anybody anytime you're available, so thanks for that.
Thank you very much, Selectman. Really, it's as if I do, because my, my job is to represent two, and two communities in an entirety, and then precinct three in Wilmington. And that's how I, what I consider my job to be. So there's no difference to me if someone calls me from Burlington or Bedford, it's my job to respond to that concern. And so, you know, in many, many towns, the geography would be, you know, if you take the landmass of Burlington and Bedford, call it, there would be no imaginary line between the two of them. So what difference would it make? So thank you very much for that observation.
So let me finish up by saying thank you. I think this is going to be a great program for the town, I think it's going to take off, and I think it will go well. Hopefully, we get more runs involved, we get more people from Lowell, and maybe they'll come in from Chelmsford up on the Lowell, and just come down that way. Hopefully, this will all work out. Echo the Board's statement about your time involvement in this, I think it's fantastic. We both know what you signed up for, so you're doing exactly what you signed up for, which is awesome, which is great for the town of Burlington. I'd like to thank Rick Parker also. You mentioned him in this comment, that he was a big part of this also. So Rick, I don't know if you're watching, but if you are, thank you very much. Other than that, what we do is appreciate it.
Yes, if you don't mind, Stephanie Cronin at Middlesex III has worked so hard on this. Rick Parker, I have.
Anybody else, because I don't know them all.
I know, I know, I appreciate it. They may be watching, and I want them to, I want the folks to know that these are the people that worked so hard on this. So thank you for pointing it out.
Thank you. You all set?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If Rick's watching the meeting, we need to get him some new activities to put on his social calendar. But Ken has been working on this project for literally years now, and Ken, Stephanie from Middlesex III, and Rick Parker, we owe them a great debt of gratitude. This is a Middlesex III program. Ken got, secured the state funding for the pilot program. And everything I've read sort of shows that the state is looking at this as what they think is a great idea for solving transportation, employment-related transportation issues. They, they're keeping an eye on it, and they think that it might be something that may be transferable to other areas of the state as well. So it's really innovative, and they've literally worked on it for years. So I thank you very much for that.
Thank you. When we started this, when I was on the Transportation Committee, Tom McGee was the Chair, he's now the Mayor of Lynn, and he said that, and he said, "Wow, this is really something that we could do. We have workers in Lynn, we have jobs in Peabody and Salem, at those areas that replicates our problem." And he said, "I support this, because I want to see you succeed." Frankly, because I want to use it as a shuttle between Lynn and Peabody to do the same thing. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, Paul, we'll move right along to the appointments.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. The first up, we don't have Chief Kent here tonight, but we have an appointment for a special police officer. Paul McGee is a longtime Burlington resident, recently retired after a 33-year career with the state police. Chief Kent feels that his knowledge of the town and his state police experience would be a valuable asset for the department. And with that introduction, I would hereby appoint Paul McGee to the position of special police officer in the Burlington Police Department, and request that the Board of Selectmen waive the standard 15-day waiting period.
Second.
So so moved the second, any discussion? All those a favor?
Aye.
Right, 4-0.
Thank you. Next up, we have a couple for Public Works Department. I'd like to see, Mr. Sanchez is here.
Thank you, Mr. Take it, Paul.
Take it over.
So first of all, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just a very quick thing that, and an update that I was asked about before this meeting tonight, about two employees from the Highway Division who competed in Colorado at the national level in the snow rodeo. So the, first time that we ever participated, you know, it's a big thing for Burlington. They did not win, unfortunately, but we came in halfway in the pack, competing against some teams that have been there more than once before in the past. So they actually did really well, placing about halfway in the pack, over 40 teams were from pretty much all the United States. And so we're proud of what they did. And they took in some seminars as well, and did other activities where they were there, so it was a great experience altogether.
Excellent.
I don't want to, uh, tell everybody about that. On the recommendations, we have two positions today. One of them is going to be a transfer from the Highway Division to the Water Division. We have Chris Hayes, who is currently in the Highway Division, he's been with us in the town for about a year. And prior to that, he has some experience also in the tow and vehicle business, and dump truck and plow operations, but right now, he wishes to move to the Water Division, where we've been lacking some personnel lately, so we're actually happy that somebody from within his appliance, so we can actually fill in those positions quickly. So Chris has a CDL A license, as well as 1B, 2A, 4E, and 4G hoisting licenses. So I recommend that we appoint him, I'm recommending that to the Town Administrator, so.
With that recommendation, hereby appoint Chris Hayes to the position of water system maintenance craftsman in the Burlington Public Works Department, and request that the Board of Selectmen waive the standard 15-day waiting period.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Right mic, second by Jimmy. All those a favor?
Aye.
Yes, 4-0.
Thank you.
I know he's all smiles back there, come on down. Say hi. I don't know who's smiling more, you or one of you three, all three, you're pretty happy. Come on down.
Yeah.
I'm sure the Highway's not happy about this.
No, he's back there shaking his head, lots of good men.
No? Let him go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So, Mr. Chairman, the second appointment is actually going to be a position that Chuck Woods from a Water Division will, will create. Mr. Woods is going to retire at the end of this week, after working 30 years with the town of Burlington. He has been most of those years with us, prior to being with the deputy, he was with the Reg Department. And he moved his way up from water system maintenance craftsman to working foreman, and legally to lead foreman. And he gave us notice about a year ago that he will retire, and he will do that again at the end of this week. So we posted the job internally, and after the interview process, I'm recommending Matt Davis for that position. Matt has been with us for seven years. The last five, he's been a working foreman. But prior to working in Burlington, he also worked for Framingham and Winchester for their water and sewer departments respectively. So Matt has a D2 full license, CDL B license, in hoistings 1C and 2A and 4A. So I'm recommending him for that position, effective at the retirement of Mr. Woods.
Thank you. With John's recommendation, hereby appoint Matt Davis to the position of water and sewer lead foreman in the Burlington Public Works Department, and request that the Board of Selectmen waive the standard 15-day waiting period.
So moved. So most of my mics, second by, Nick, all those a favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I just say tonight?
I'm here too.
Congratulations very much. Congrats.
Congratulations, neighbor.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
I think Chris with you now.
I work for you.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Sanchez is here, a couple weeks ago, the Board had requested an update on our initiative to become a member of the MWRA, and John's here to give you guys an update on that.
So if I, if I may, again, I'm going to start with, the town meeting did vote to, vote to approve the joining of the MWRA about a year ago now. And since then, we've been working hard through the permitting process to officially join the authority. Part of the process was legislative, and we actually got that approval, and the governor signed into law that we are allowed to join the MWRA, so things have been moving. The permitting part is what has been taking a long time. There is a lot of moving parts to get an approval through the environmental process, which is called the MEPA process. So the good news is that we are weeks away from submitting our draft environmental impact report. This report is sent to a lot of agencies with the state for review. We've been working with them prior to submitting, so it's not going to be a surprise to them. We want to make sure that we are filling in all the blanks before they actually get the application. They should be getting that in about a month from now. And our goal is to have a very complete draft, such that we can do what they call a rollover final environmental impact report. Typically, when you do a draft, and it's not very complete, then you go through another process, which may take probably another six months to a year to complete. But what we've done in this one is we put all the effort in the first part of the draft, such that we can actually complete this and just roll over into the final. So if things go as planned, we hope that we'll get all this permit through the winter, and then we can officially join the authority in the next calendar year. I would say it's more like summer of 2020. This still doesn't really allow us to connect, because we have to physically install a pipe in the ground. Our goal is to construct that pipe during the construction season next year. That's the pipe on Adams Street, between the Middlesex Turnpike and North in Lexington, and that will take the construction season to do. So hopefully, by the end of the summer, we'll have both the permit from the environmental agencies, as well as our pipe constructed. So that will be the first time that we are allowed to take water from Lexington, or MWRA, via Lexington, without having to have a water emergency, as we do today. I get asked a lot why we have an emergency, and maybe if you don't mind me saying it one more time, the only way that we can get water from any community right now is through a water emergency. And before the state declares an emergency, we have to have a full water ban. So that's the whole idea of the process that we went through when you approved the water ban a couple of weeks ago. DEP did approve the emergency a week ago today. So on Friday, I officially requested the MWRA for them to allow us the connection. So we expect to hear from them this week. And at the same time, we're diligently working in lowering the water demand, because the idea of having a water ban is not just to have one, we, in order for us to do any maintenance work, as we need to do right now, the water uses to be low enough that we will sustain the town with one treatment plant plus that emergency connection. Right now, today, we're still not able to do that, we're still a little too high. It did drop about a million gallons since two weeks ago, but we're still a couple of hundred thousand gallons too high to be able to do our maintenance. So we're, we hope by the end of the week, with phone calls and some enforcement, we'll be able to get the level down to where we need to be so we can do the work. But with that, I'm here for any questions you may have on, on the MWRA process, or the permitting, or anything else you may have.
Jim?
Again, that's all right.
Mike?
No, fine, thank you. Just one quick question.
Yeah.
Because you know I have to ask a question. One, sorry for that. The million that we're over, is that within the realm of the 3 million that we typically use, or is that like in excess of what we typically use?
No, we, actually, we did pretty well this year. We've been as high as about 4 million gallons a day. This year, we've been averaging like 3 and 1/2, which is really good, and now we're down to about 2.6 million gallons, which is really good. I mean, in about two weeks, we actually got down almost to where we need to be. So no, we were not any higher than we've been in the past. In fact, we've been a little lower this year.
Great. Thank you.
So just a quick comment. This is more for just everyone, anyone listening to this. There is a full water ban on, which means there's no watering. There's no, every other day, there's no, well, I can water after 5:00 and I can do, there's no watering in town. So when you drive by and I see someone sprinkle system on, it's like, you're not special. Stop watering. There's a reason for it. There's a reason why we have a water ban, and Mr. Sanchez has just explained 80% of it. So please, you know, shut them off, have them blown out, winter's here, you really don't need to water right now. All right? That's all I'm going to say about it. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Sanchez, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, we had a hearing for alcohol licensing, and the proponent has asked for a brief extension, so if I could ask a board member to continue this public hearing, and I'm going to give it to my right-hand, left-hand person here to read the actual motion that we need on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Burlington Board of Selectmen are allowed to extend and continue the public hearing with respect to the consideration of cancellation of all alcohol liquor license of Slazar Brothers Brewing Company Incorporated doing business as Burlington Beer Works from October 7, 2019 at 6:30 p.m. to October 28, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. as requested by the license holder.
Okay, gentlemen.
Second.
Second, first, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So I got a funny feeling I'm going to be in a wheelchair in nursing home by the time this thing's over with. It's been, what, five years? Four years? Anyway, we got that done, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, Brian Curtin is here to discuss and get the board's approval of this year's upcoming health insurance rates.
Thank you. Brian, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you. We have good news. Paul and I have been meeting with various unions and, you know, staff members, Human Resource Director, Benefits Administrator in my office, my staff, relative to, and we have a consultant, Kate Cherry, relative to proposing to the board to set our health insurance rate for both active and retiree employees that are in the health plans effective for January 1, 2020. And the good news to report is, is that we're asking the board to only increase the active employees' premiums monthly 3% in the three programs we offer, Blue Care Elect, Blue Cross, and Harvard Pilgrim, and those plans are in the high deductible plans. The individual plans are $1,000 deductible, the town pays the first 500, as you might recall, and on the family plans, it's $2,000 deductible, town pays the first 1,000. We have quality health insurance program with the town of Burlington. We went to the high deductible plans back in 2012, just for Nick Priest, who's a new member of the board's information. The senior plans that we offer, we have one, two, three, four, five different options for our retirees on the Medicare over 65 plans, and those plans are not set by us, they're basically regional plans that the rate is set by the number of people that are in the plans regionally, and we offer Blue Cross Medex, that plan is going up 2.2% effective January 1. We have Blue Cross Managed Blue for seniors, which is, you know, where most of our retirees are. We've got over 170 retirees that are in that plan. That's only going up 3%. And then we have Harvard Medicare Enhanced, that plan is going up 5.3%. Tufts Preferred is going up 3.2%, and then Tufts Preferred Supplement is going up 1.2%. Like I said, we, even though we're self-insured on our active plans, these plans here, we don't set those rates, they're set regionally by the companies based on claims experience over the last, you know, 12 months. So overall, it's great news. I think Paul and I are very comfortable with these proposals, noting that these will probably help us balance our budget for fiscal '21 as we propose budget increases in the coming months. The other good news is that the town of Burlington, since we've been in the high deductible plans, we've saved over $4 million in premiums. Our average increase over the last four years has been 3.82%, and with these increases, we'll probably even lower that a little bit lower. So over the last five years, we're just doing very well. Very fortunate here in the town of Burlington to be offering these quality plans. The other good news financially, just to let the board know, because we only do this usually once a year and once on our budget time, is that our health insurance trust fund balances are very healthy. For our active plans presently, we have $9,405,000 in our trust fund, and then our OPEB State Retiree Trust Fund for future health insurance retirees, which as you people know about OPEB, what that is, and we're waiting for our final results on our actual update as of 12/31/18, which is being worked on now. We're expecting that report anytime now. We're hoping to present that to town meeting in January, Paul and I. But that plan is at $9,429,463, and we, to date, the town has contributed through the budget process and so forth in savings of money in our premiums, $7,460,294, and we've earned investment income of close to $2 million, $1,969,169, when we started contributing to OPEB, which is back in August 30, 2013. So the town has very healthy trust funds, very proud of that, and I think from all the, you know, collaboration efforts between administration and Paul, myself, John Petron back in the day, Ways and Means Committee and the town meeting supporting us in the board, I think we're very fortunate here in Burlington. Here to answer any questions you might have relative to the health insurance program. We insured, just to let you know, almost 1,450 people, like 770 actives, you know, give or take a few, and over 660 Medicare people, so we insure almost 1,450 people in the town of Burlington. So large responsibility. This board and this town has been very generous with their health insurance programs, as you know. We contribute 70% to the premiums, some of the older retirees, we contribute 90% to the ones that were retired before 2006, and from 2006 to 2018, those people paid 20% of their premiums monthly, and now all new retirees will pay 30% of their premiums. But we've been very fortunate here in Burlington to offer these quality programs.
Thank you, Brian. You? Go ahead.
I just want to reiterate for the board, this is really great news. Health insurance is a huge budget buster in most communities, and with the collaboration that we have working on the committee with Brian and the members from his office, John, Danizio, Joanne from HR, and we also get a great contributions from our collective bargaining groups. I just want to mention that name, Bill Trelligan representing the police, Ed McLean representing the fire department, Diana Marcus representing schools, and Jerry Mills representing the BMEA. These folks work really collaboratively with us. Everybody realizes we have a very excellent plan, but everybody also realizes it's a very costly program for the taxpayers, so we're constantly looking for ways to keep the cost of the program in check, and I think the committee's been very successful doing that for quite a while now, so it's really very impressive. And again, a lot of luck, it's based upon, you know, we self-insured, so we pay the bills as they come in, so there is an element of luck there, but we do a lot of forecasting. We've been able to set aside some funds in the trust funds to buffer any future radical changes. So we've built up a supply of money there that will help us sort of mitigate this, mitigate this into the future, and we're constantly looking for ways to reinvent the program, to offer new products, to work on the wellness programs. A lot of the stuff the employees are really helping us out with, and, you know, some of that is, you know, don't go to the hospital for an MRI, go to Shields MRI, so all those little things that we learn about, our employees have done a great job and been very responsive to sort of changing their behaviors to sort of keep the cost of the plans down as well. So a real great job by everyone involved.
Thank you.
Continual education program on wellness, we have a diabetes program, we have, you know, our drug program with Canada RX, try to reduce the cost of drugs for all, you know, enrollees. So we've done a lot to help reduce premiums, which, you know, in the long run saves the town and the taxpayers money.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Quickly, I think a lot's been noted already, but, I mean, you know, year over year, increases have only been, you know, 3% on average is, you know, versus the private sector and in other locales where they're double-digit increases. We have done very, very, very well, and just want to sort of echo my thanks to everyone involved in working so hard to address this and keep it manageable. So thank you. Thank you to all.
Jim?
Just kind of like what Mike said and then Paul said, thank you, Brian, for all your efforts, and thank all the members of the committee, and as Mike said, 3% is, it's good news, so thank you.
Mr. Priest?
No questions, but again, thank you for all your hard work. I know it's like a, you know, we're beating a dead horse, but we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
So one more slap on the horse. Thank you, Brian. What can I say? Your staff does a great job, the town does a great job, Paul, everyone involved, Mr. Danizio sitting down back, I'd like to thank him too. Hi, John. What can we say? We're in a great place. We're in a great town. That's all I can say. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Do we need approval of these rates?
We need a motion to approve the rates as proposed.
We were just having a good time.
Oh, yeah, certainly always. Good news is nice.
I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve the rates as proposed for fiscal year 2020.
Motion by Jim, second by, both of them?
Yeah, we all did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Same against. Four zero.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, Brian, thank you.
Okay, next up, Mr. Chairman, we have members of the Sidewalk Committee here for request of the board. Hopefully this will make some of what Representative Gordon was talking about, make a little bit more clear to you. But Steve, Steve Moran is here to update the board on the work that the Sidewalk Committee has done.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Selectmen, thank you very much for having me tonight. If I'd known Representative Gordon was here, then I would have been here a couple minutes earlier, but I do appreciate your consideration. So the Sidewalk Committee, with the help of John Larson, his wife, and his father Bud Larson, canvassed the street, Cambridge Street, from the Bill Ricker Town Line down to the Woburn Town Line, because the committee itself had received a lot of complaints about the poor conditions of sidewalks. The committee had heard throughout its process that in addition to wanting new sidewalks in various locations, they also wanted us to upkeep the sidewalks that we currently have, and Cambridge Street was one of the biggest complaints that we have received. And I have, we have put together about 140-page report of various locations in the town of, on Cambridge Street that require some kind of maintenance or replacement of the sidewalk. And so the committee noted that the sidewalks on Cambridge Street are missing for various stretches on either side of the road, which can force pedestrians to cross multiple times to get to their destination, and often in places where there may not be a crosswalk that crosses the street. So for example, 82 Cambridge Street is one of those places. We also noted that there are some places where it is actually very dangerous to cross. So for example, if you're walking across the 128 interchange where there is a sidewalk, there's no warning lights, there's no cross light signals, and also at the Burlington Commons, which is the plaza with the new Target, there is no pedestrian walk signals in that plaza as well. The sidewalks are uneven, they're deteriorating, and they're often obstructed by poles, sometimes with double poles, which create hazards and also provide, they're also a concern for people with disabilities because there's often no places where they can actually get down off the sidewalk, move around the double pole, and then continue travel in that section. So back in May, I met with Representative Gordon to talk about a couple of the things that were of interest to the committee. The first is the poor conditions in the sidewalk of Burlington. He suggested we do the sidewalk survey, and he also suggested that we get approval for petitioning the Mass Department of Transportation to fix the sidewalks on Cambridge Street, because as you know, it's a state-maintained road. So we have obtained a letter from the board, the planning board, with their approval to petition the Mass DOT, and I'm seeking the Board of Selectmen's approval for that process as well. Now to clarify some comments that Representative Gordon made, at that same meeting, we also talked about the various fundings that the state has for new sidewalk programs, and he suggested that I send in some text about potentially requesting funding for new sidewalks within town. And so as a committee, we made recommendations for the, for three streets, Blanchard, Stony Brook, and Mueller, but we also discovered that the Complete Streets Program, Tom Hayes of the DPW, had put together a list of the streets that the town prioritized, and those three streets were on it just a little bit lower in priority than what we felt, but we certainly heard some of the same comments about those streets. So we would be happy if he would be able to obtain funding for those as well, so, and we would support that.
Great, thank you.
I have a, I have a copy of the report that I printed out that shows the various locations and...
Yeah, we got that in the backup.
We have, we have a copy in the office, it was too substantial to put in your package. It's a good representative of all the work that this committee's done. I urge you to check it out, the amount of work that was put into it.
I'm happy to leave this copy as well for you guys to check out. Again, I would also, this was a collaborative effort with the Larsons and Adam Sinessi from the committee and myself, who divided up Cambridge Street and walked the entire street from Bill Ricker to Woburn. That was quite, quite a task.
Well, most of you, if you've probably seen Steve walking, because he's known, he knows the sidewalks better than anyone in town because of the amount of walking he does, so he was the perfect guy to lead this committee.
Doesn't matter the weather conditions either, he's out there.
And the shorts on.
Yeah.
But I know how hard you guys have worked on this, and I'd like to thank all the committee members and everybody that's been involved in this.
We also have Christine Warren here from the committee, so I'd like to thank her, Mildred Nash, Adam Sinessi, and Sean Connors, all town meeting members.
So what Steve is requesting of the board is to submit a letter in support of his request to get funding from the state to fix these sidewalks, so that's what his purpose is here tonight. I know you were checking with disability access too, you were able to...
Yeah, I have, I'm waiting on a response from Mr. Hanafin with regards to being able to help him out, but I know that he was planning to look at Bedford Street because the double poles are quite an issue, and single poles within the sidewalks, they're just not conducive for people being able to maneuver around them, especially with the granite curbing. There's no way for someone in a wheelchair to easily get down and then back up again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that, that money Mr. Gordon was talking about, would that be the letter we'd be sending out for?
Yes, we'd be requesting the support for that.
We'll do that. I think that's an easy fix. I'd like to thank you for the time you put involved, and yes, we all see you walk in the streets every day, every day, rain or shine. Nick, anything?
First off, thank you to everybody who walked and who's been working on this committee. It's, it's really important. You know, you say sidewalks, and you're like, oh, they're sidewalks, but I mean, you know, sidewalks are crucial, not just to, you know, people who are walking their dogs or, you know, who want to get their kids to the park, but for people who need to get to the bus to get to work, you know, for people who are trying to get places on foot. I mean, it's so important, you know, I mean, I look at... You know, I mean, I, I look at these photos, and I mean, I've walked a lot of this myself, I'm out walking the dog, and I mean, you know, it's, it's you, you know, and heaven forbid something's coming the other way, you know, for whatever reason, you gotta do a dozy do or jump into the road and pray a car isn't there. You know, having, having a good, you know, sidewalk infrastructure is, is extremely important to the community, for all people, you know, whether it be people getting to work, people with disabilities, you know, people walking their dog, going for a run, whatever it is, it's just like having a good roadway system. It's, it's extremely important, so I mean, you know, I think I speak for everybody here when I say that, you know, we would happily, you know, support and send a letter of support to the state.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, no, just, I'll just wait for who's gonna make that motion, I'd be happy to sign on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, thank, again, thank you to you and the committee. Just out of curiosity, what time of day did you walk?
I walked on a Sunday from about 12 to 2, and I had the section starting from the Woburn Town Line up to about 82, 85 Cambridge Street. So, I had the daunting section. We did it at different times, I'm not sure which time Mr. Larson or Mr. Sinessi did it, but we, the sidewalk conditions wouldn't vary based on the time, it's just the traffic conditions that would. I did try to get it in before a rainstorm, and I didn't make it, so that was, that was, that was, that was good. I, I'd also like to thank the former Board of Selectmen, who would also sometimes, if he sees me, give me rides, if it's downpouring, I do appreciate that.
Is that a hint?
No.
Just in case.
Not a hint.
Just in case we see you.
No, no, it's not a hint.
You know, good job.
No, no, I come prepared, I have a backpack cover and I have a, a good raincoat, so...
All right, just checking.
I'm weather.
We'll pick you up, just give us a signal.
All right.
All right, so I think we, we need a motion at this point for the letter, so who would like to make the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we have staff draft a letter.
Yep.
Probably comparable to what the planning board has done.
Motion by Mike?
In support of the sidewalk effort.
Second by Nick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate it.
John, before you leave the room, I have one quick question. They're going for a million dollars, no, Mr. Sanchez, I should have.
I was hoping to get...
I should have said, John, you can leave, brother, you're all set. So, yeah, you were real close, had my head down for a second. That million dollars, if we get it from the state, how far will that get us?
Well, again, we talked about this in the past, how it was about a hundred dollars a foot, that's what we do for, for concrete sidewalks. You probably have the mileage of the road, but it must be a couple of miles long.
For Cambridge Street?
Yeah.
It's probably about three to four miles.
So, four miles is about 20,000 feet, to give you an idea, so...
Okay, so I might have to prioritize which ones could be done first.
Now, some of the portions of Cambridge Street have been done recently, so obviously we won't have to do those.
Yeah, there are sections like around Simons Park, and then, of course, the new plazas that are getting built out have, have good sidewalks, but the upper section towards the Bill Ricker Line, for example, has a lot of uneven, uneven pavement, a lot of cracks, a lot of places where it's just, it's hard to maneuver. And then, of course, there, the safety issues down in the lower section, Burlington Commons, the I-1, I-95 interchange, those are places that, if you're getting off the bus at Mall Road and have to go down towards West High Common, and on a winter afternoon, like a five or six o'clock, when the, when the sun has set, is just treacherous. I, I, I realized that the hard way, because I had to do that at one point, and I'm like, I don't know how anybody gets across it.
Just my point being that with, with the million dollars, I know it can only go so far, it's not gonna fix the whole thing at all, so I'm sure your committee has a prioritize, prioritize which ones would be in order along, Mr. Sanchez could work on that with you once we get that, if we get that million dollars, all right?
We certainly, we certainly can contribute to that conversation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, you're all set now. I think you're all set, go ahead.
Thank you.
Are you going home? Why don't you stick around a little bit, I might have another question for you later. All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, we have Joyce Fay and Peter Capola here from the Historical Commission. Regarding a sign on the Historic Museum, so...
Hello, everybody, yes. Who wants to go first, Peter, Joyce?
Joyce, the chairman.
Hi Joyce, how are you? Nice to see you. Go right ahead.
I need you to repeat my name.
No, I think we all know who both of you are.
Gentlemen, we have been struggling with, with exposure for the building. People, residents who visit the museum, and residents who, who would like to visit the museum, always ask, where is the museum? And then, when you tell them where the museum is, oh, I know that building, but they don't know that it's this Historic Museum. So, we've always have been struggling with, with trying to get people to visit the museum, and the signages that we had been using were, were essentially the real estate open house signs that, that we put out the week before to advertise the museum will be open, and we felt that we needed something better than that, a little bit more permanent, that would easily be recognized by, by people driving by or walking by that this is the town's Historic Museum. So, we went out for the end, for the middle of the year, and we, we purchased the sign, knowing that we would have to go through the process of getting approval and everything, but we, and so we maybe we put the copy for the horse, but we, we still, we went out and purchased the sign, and now we're requesting permission to place the sign on the property.
Did you bring the pictures?
They have, do you have a photograph?
So, I just gotta ask one quick question. On this photograph, it has a sign, which is, I'm assuming the one you're gonna use.
That is the sign, that's...
That's the actual sign, so are there hours to the...
A rectangle at the bottom of the sign, that would be for posting events, so we would, the week before the museum opens, we would hang a sign, open Saturday by these hours.
So, assuming it has little hooks on it, you could just hang a sign on it or whatever?
Velcro strip, yes.
Velcro, okay.
Right, and what we're also planning on doing now is, when it's on that area, right, they just say the building was constructed in 1855, so it'll be Burlington Museum constructed 1855, that would be covered when we're having an event.
I usually let these guys go first, but I don't know why I did that. So, anyway, so Jimmy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Jimmy. That was actually one of my questions about announcing events. How far back, it's, it's gonna be in an angled face in Bedford and Cambridge?
It will be right against the pine tree that's on that, that landscaped island.
Okay. How far back from the curb is my question?
It's, it's 20, almost 30 feet off of both.
Okay, all right.
So, turns the line of sight, you're almost 40 to 50 feet back, and you can still see through the intersection.
Yeah, I was, just wanted to make sure it couldn't be struck if a car went over the first lane, too. That was my concern as far as...
It'll be, it'll definitely be a beacon that says, hit me, I...
Is it gonna be illuminated?
No.
Okay. And one quick question, does this sign comply, comply with all the 3A overlay regulations? They've been working with Andy on it, so...
Yeah, he approved it.
Building, well, building inspector approved it.
Okay, yep. All right, good.
Okay, Mr. ZBA.
Yeah.
That all came out, didn't it?
Yeah, it certainly did.
Michael?
I, I guess my question is, if it's approved by the building inspector, then why do they, why do they need authority from, from the Board of Selectmen?
Well, it's technically your building, so...
Okay. Well, I mean, if the building inspector's okay with it, I'm okay with it, Peter.
Well, I don't believe he signed off on anything, but he, they've been working with them on the sign placement and the type of sign, so, just so that you, you folks are aware, that they have been working with the building department on it, so...
Because I know we do have a, there is a component of the sign by law for municipal signage, and obviously municipal...
Like I said, the...
Are we putting the cop before the horse again, if we, if we approve this?
So, the way I look at it, Mike, if they put it up, they'd be putting the cop before the horse, so...
Well, I'm not surprised they've already got the sign in, in, in your possession, that doesn't surprise me no one here as well as I do, but...
That was me, Joyce.
Mr. Chairman, I mean...
Peter takes all the blame all the time.
Hold on, hold on.
Peter, I'm just surprised you didn't make the sign.
Thank you.
He would have.
It wasn't a good...
I would have.
Mr. Priest?
I do have a question, but not for you folks, but for everyone here, actually, is, if it's not lit, should it be? You know, I mean, just like one ground light that, you know, is up, or, you know, two low?
I would, I would defer that to them if that's their, I know it's technically the town sign, but I would let them make that decision, if they want it lit at nighttime, let them know that it is a museum. I don't know if there's another, is there, is there another permit we have to get for that, to have two spotlights put on it?
We already have a light over there that's, I don't know if it works or not, but it was to shine...
On the flag.
On the flag, I believe.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't think it's working now, so, but I, I'm sure that if you wanted to light it on the sign, they could fix it to do that.
Yeah, I mean, while we have Parks and Rec maintenance grid there, they should take a look at that light. I, I mean, I think this is great, you know, and I mean, this is almost like a no contest type thing, right? I mean, of course we want to, you know, showcase our museum, I mean, the fact that people don't know that that's what that building is, and it's literally in the center of town, and it's, it's important not only to preserve our history, but to share it with people. Preservation means nothing if we're not... Right, I mean, preservation means nothing if, if no one's gonna look at it, right? So, I think this is great, and, I mean, thank you all for your efforts, you know, around the historical, you know, society and keeping things well preserved and maintained.
Thank you.
Paul, do you have anything?
I have nothing to add, I just want to...
You need a letter from the building inspector?
No, we, we can call him, get that settled right away. Very easy thing to do. I, I just whispered over here, I'm surprised it wasn't put up, and then asked for forgiveness later. I've seen that happen before.
Could have done that, too.
You actually did it, you actually did it the right way, because I, I know this board's gonna say yes.
I'm sure there's a lot of signs put up in town.
I wouldn't say that, I would never say something like that. So, anyway, I think we need a, there's a million things going through this head of mine right now.
Well, in that case, I'll make a motion to approve the sign as presented.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, and all those in favor? Aye. Best of luck, have fun with your sign.
Thank you very much.
You know, the light, might, might be of interest to you to put the light up, and I think Mr. Priest has a good idea to let people know about it.
I'd like to run the vote placement and anything, everything, anyway, I'll take the opportunity to talk about some of that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna have to hold off two minutes, we're early.
No, you're...
No, I'm only kidding. All right, Mr. Sagrino, go right ahead.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, this, this agenda item's all yours, I wasn't a privy to this meeting, so...
Yes.
We have the theaters, yeah.
It's the theater, and she's here. So, if you could just come up and state your name, and we'll go from there.
Yeah. Hi, gentlemen, my name is Kate Boucher, I'm the general manager over at the AMC in Burlington. We're working today on proposing some changes to the conditions of our alcohol license regarding the alcohol compliance model.
So, if you want to just go over quickly what you're actually looking, what the rest of the board, no, I already know what this is. I have not gone over with it yet.
Our, as it stands right now, we have the alcohol compliance monitor in place to monitor inside the auditoriums, making sure that folks aren't passing off drinks and such with the access to our bar. And the condition states right now that that person's not allowed to be asked to do anything else, including picking up a napkin, or holding a broom, or helping in any other capacity. So, we are gearing up for a very slow movie theater year, so the topic came up in our budgets, as, you know, we're worrying about payroll and where to cut expenses and such, and to not be able to have this person provide any other services to our guests has financially put a burden on my location in particular. So, we're still happy to have it, I do think that I, you know, we've revealed that Monday through Thursday, they're not busy work, they're not busy days at the movie theater, and to have a person standing around with a clipboard and, you know, making their way into an auditorium on occasion to make sure everything is on the up and up, when we have days where we might sell three, four drinks, tops. It just, it's, it's a little bit burdensome. So, we're hoping to, you know, Monday through Thursday, relax the alcohol compliance monitor position.
Great. So, just to go a little bit further, myself, Mr. Hogan had a meeting on this, we actually talked to Chief Kent, he's in favor of this, to go, to go to Monday through Thursday with the monitor doing other jobs, still monitoring, but doing other jobs on a trial basis. You both, everything, everyone got the backup on the numbers, if you look at the numbers this days, it's only two people that got a, a drink, so to try to help the movie theater out, I think this is a good idea for us to try to, you know, move forward, if things change, we've asked for the numbers...
For three months.
For three months, we're gonna give a trial basis, and then move on from there, we'll see what happens. So, myself and Bob are in favor of this, along with the chief, the chief was in favor of it also. Now, opening up to questions, Paul, you have any questions, first of all?
The only thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, I think what we'd be doing is sort of suspending that part of the policy for three months, because it's in your policy, so what we'd be looking to do with the vote is sort of suspend that and revisit it in three months to determine whether you actually want to change the policy, or, you know, to keep it the same way it is.
We'll start with questions, Nick?
So, my question is, we'd be suspending the one-line italics that's written here on the letter from the law firm, is that the, what we've been making a motion on?
Just to approve the concept, I think, is what we'd be doing. I don't know which line you're referring to.
Sorry, so in the, in the letter, or the, the email from, well, it's got the law office's letterhead on it, but it says that they're referring to condition three, and this is this staff member should not have any other duties assigned to them, italics added, and I'm just trying to understand, like, I get the concept when we say it out loud, I'm just trying to understand, like, what I'm reading here in the back of, is what we're talking about, they sound like opposites, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, because I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, taking that one little piece out and seeing how you guys do for three months.
Yeah, one of the things that we had mentioned when we were proposing this idea, excuse me, you know, we do have a deliver-to-seat program to help with concession revenue and such, where people can actually purchase their items online, and then, you know, we get a notice 15 minutes before they seat, that, you know, so we already have people going into these auditoriums to deliver food, we're actively, as management and leadership team, going into the auditoriums just to make sure people are not on their phones and not causing disruptions anyway, so there are eyes already in those auditoriums on every given day.
Sure. Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, and I apologize for the confusion, that we're, the goal here is, is that we're gonna suspend this line from condition three.
That the person can do tasks other than monitoring alcohol.
Well, so, because the line says that they should not have any other duties assigned to them, so we'd be suspending that so they could have other duties assigned to them?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that I'm picking out whatever's putting down, face up what's here in the paper. All right, sorry? Yes, okay. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, actually, I was on the board when we granted the license for, for AMC, that was one of the conditions I was, I felt was a little bit draconian, honestly, we don't do that to anybody else. I reluctantly agreed to the policy as written, just to, just get the, the whole ball moving. I'm not opposed to suspending that portion of the compliance regulations that we've drawn, in fact, I'd even take it a step further, and just eliminate altogether for three months, give you Sunday through Monday. However, I'm, I don't know if the board, the rest of the board's interested in entertaining that notion.
I would entertain that thought in three months from now. I would, I would, I would let, I would do this to go for three months, see how that goes, and then entertain the thought about getting it all together, except for the weekends. You know, we'll come up with something, see what happens with, she's gonna bring us the numbers in three months to see, you know, what went on, and stuff like that.
And on the weekends, we do have the police detail as well...
Yes.
...to help support us, and, you know, I had gone so far to talk to the detail officers to see if there have been any alcohol-related incidents, and none of them were pertaining to what we do at the movie theater.
I think you mentioned it was two alcoholic incidents, and there was one guy drinking out back.
Yeah, and it wasn't in an AMC container.
Another guy, another guy they wouldn't let in the theater because he was drunk coming in, so those are the two incidents they had prior to any of this going on, but I would definitely entertain that idea in three months from now.
Okay, fair, fair enough.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jim and Tom.
Jimmy Jingle? Michael's over there.
Yeah.
Got you, didn't I?
You did. No, I agree, I agree with Nick's point about it being a little, will we be suspending the whole condition, or the one line? And I, I, I know the, the concept, and I agree, I know there've been no incidents regarding alcohol being served by AMC, and I'm just trying to think if we say, how we would do this, to say, the motion would be to suspend the wording, suspend the last sentence of condition three, or do we suspend condition three itself for ninety days?
I would just say, suspend the condition of the monitor between the, between Monday and Thursday for the next three months. Just make it simple.
Yep.
That's what I, that's what I would, I'm not, I can't make a condition, so, I mean, I can't, but it's up to you guys to make a motion.
However you guys wanna word it.
I would just, I would just say, suspend the monitor's duties from Monday to Friday, Monday to Thursday, for the next three months, and we'll revisit.
Yes.
That's all. So that's the motion.
October, November, December.
Yep, yep.
I'll see you after the holidays.
Sorry, so suspending their duties entirely with regard to being the monitor, or they still carry on monitor duties, plus they're allowed to carry on other duties as well?
Say it again.
So-
They're still monitored.
They're still gonna be monitored.
That's the point I'm trying to get at.
They're still gonna monitor, but they're not gonna be standing and doing just monitoring.
Just the monitor, right. Right.
Would it be easier if we just said we'll make a motion to allow the monitor to do other duties for ninety days? Whatever you guys are most comfortable with.
I think, I think that's probably the clearest, the clearest possible motion.
Less words, least amount of words?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that, with regards to AMC Thiz, for ninety days, we allow the monitor assigned between Monday through Thursday to do duties in addition to just monitoring the alcohol.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second, any discussion? All in favor? We're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Two thirteen.
Next up is a stop sign, Mr. Chairman, if you could postpone that one on my behalf, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. Let's postpone. With the vote on that postponement, or just postpone?
No, let's just-
Okay, thank you.
And the last up that I have on here, Mr. Chairman, is the recognition for the finance department for the comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFRA.
He left. Why did he leave? Just a moment in the spotlight.
Denazio?
Yes.
John, I know you're watching this, could you come back in the room, please?
Paul had to sit there and take it.
Well, I know why, I know why John isn't here, because this is for the fiscal year that ended June thirty, two thousand eighteen, so.
But I know he's watching this right now, so, Mr. Denazio, could you come back in the room, please? We're gonna wait for you, John.
So, the CAFRA is a national award, you saw the letter in your packet, and what we do with our financial statements is we do an extended financial report at the end of the year, so what we're being credited for is, is providing excellent, above and beyond information for the residents to review what we've done financially. One of the things about the CAFRA award, and I always think it's kinda funny, is it doesn't mean that we have great finances, although we have excellent finances, if we were going bankrupt, and we did a good job of showing everyone how we were going bankrupt, we could get the award for excellence in financial reporting, so. It's not based upon having great finances, what it does show is that we go above and beyond in this area to provide information to our residents about the financial results of the town, and you guys have seen the report, it's a, it's a beautiful report, there's a ton of information in there, we've gotten a lot of compliments from, from town meeting members and residents on, the information is provided in there, and all I can say is, I've carried the ball over the goal line for a few years, and if we don't get the award in the future, it's probably gonna be John's fault, so.
Why, I was in my office to not give Paul a chance to say that, but when we do get the award next year, I'll be in here peacocking and stuff.
So, I just wanted to bring you back in the room, only because I wanna say thank you for everything you've do, and everything he's done in the past to get you to where you need to do for the future. And the other reason I brought you out here is, it's not that I get often I get to tell you what to do, and here I do, outside of here, it's a whole different ballgame, and I've heard some things that, being with you in different events, that I am not your boss outside of here, am I? Not even close. So I just wanna say thank you, and I'm sure the other board members have something to say about both you guys getting us to a point of, you know, where we are right now.
Well, I know what John would say, is that we get a lot, we got a lot of assistance from our staff members, Whitney, staff in the accounting office, treasurer's office, so all the financial offices participate in providing information for this report, so it's, again, if a resident, it's listed on the website, so I highly recommend if anyone has an interest in the town's finances to, to read that report. Very, very well done, and a lot of great information in there.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's refreshing, it's great to be up here to hear, not only are we getting the, you know, kudos for reporting, but the fact that we are in such good standings, and our finances are great, and it's because of you guys, Paul, for years, you-
Carried the football.
Yeah, you did, and John, you got big shoes to fill. Seems, from what I've heard, you're doing a great job so far, so maybe you'll, what was it, Drew Bledsoe the guy knocked out, and Tom Brady came in? It's all history from that point on.
I'd go with more the Richard Seymour and somebody else, I don't want the Tom Brady caliber.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, John, for, you know, picking up where Paul left off, and keeping us where we are today.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I know, whenever this comes up, we always have some good-natured chatter back and forth over this award, but in all seriousness, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, you know, when we start piling up these awards year after year after year, not only, you know, in our accounting division, but as John mentioned earlier, our guys, whether the DPW or rodeo, our annual reports, recognize, I mean, it's just, just that whole compilation of all of the attention we receive, the awards we receive, the accolades we get from our peers in, in, in the state, throughout the state, is, you know, very, leave us in a pretty enviable position, and, and that's thanks to a talented team that we've assembled here in Burlington over the last thirty years or so, so certainly a pleasure for me to be a part of that, and again, thank you, and congratulations, again, this year, for, for that award.
Thank you.
Nick?
I'll just say that, you know, watching Paul talk about it, you know, is, is a perfect example of the enthusiasm that the people who work for this, this community have. You know, he's passionate about this report and his job, you know, and that, and it shows, it doesn't just show, obviously, it is enthusiasm, but it shows in, in the accolades that we receive as a community, and I think that that's absolutely wonderful, and I'm, you know, one of, you know, twenty-five thousand-ish people who, you know, get to benefit from, you know, the hard work that you folks put in, day in, day out, and, you know, these are the kinds of things that I don't think the average resident knows or notices, and it shouldn't go unnoticed, and obviously, you know, we're being recognized, and it's not, so, you know, congratulations.
I really appreciate that, like I say, what we do with this report is completely voluntary, we're not required to do that, and I know that when we sit down and we start putting together the information, we say to ourselves, why the heck are we doing all this extra work, but at the end of the day, I think we were able to provide great information for the residents, and, you know, great information for anyone that holds our bonds, it tells us, tells everybody a lot about what's going on in the town financially, and, you know, it really, we're really proud of it, so, again, we're not required to do it, and we took, took it on a few years ago, the additional work to, to get the report done, and, and we're very pleased that, you know, to be recognized for it again, I think it's third or fourth year?
Yeah, fourth.
Fourth year, so.
So I'll, I'll just say this, I've sat here and I listened to everybody speak about this awards, I've heard a comment of, I carried the football across the goal line, it's his turn to do it, I've heard, Mr. Bledsoe got knocked out, Mr. Brady took over, I've heard year after year after year that we've won this award, so I just found out it's four years we're running, so one more year, we can be, like, two more years, we'll be the New England Patriots, and we'll be six, six-time world champions. This town's doing great, that's how I feel about it. You guys have done a great job, and we're lucky enough as, not only supplement, but as, as residents, to benefit from this, this is what we benefit from, so I just wanna say thank you, and I'm really glad you came back in the room, because I really do appreciate it, so thank you.
You'd be shocked, Nick, to know that there's not a lot of stuff to be excited about in the accounting office.
No, I don't, I don't believe it for a second, John.
And it truly, like Paul said, it truly is a team effort, it goes through a bunch of other departments that have to provide. Whitney really runs the show, and getting all the information to her, and getting the report done, it's, it really is a team effort, so we will continue to do your job.
Thank you.
Last one.
Yes.
Are we gonna do a formal recognition or presentation at some point on this?
No, we, this is, this is what we typically do.
Next year.
So, so yes, I believe what Paul's saying, Mr. Chairman, is yes, we should do some pomp and circumstance around this.
You know, accounting's not much about pomp and circumstance, but John may feel differently about it, like I say, next year. He can walk in the parade with you guys and hold the award.
If we do that, we get him a float, we get him a flag.
Can we do that? Yeah, we can do that.
Couple of banners, there you go. Okay, so we-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, thank you. Okay, we'll go right to subcommittee reports, we'll start with Mr. Tigas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have too much to report, I know the fire department had opened the house Saturday, but I was unable to attend, so I can't comment on that, unless, Mike, do you have any insight on that?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
I was just not able to attend, but other than that, it's-
Okay.
Been quiet for me.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, two items. First item, and I think is very important to note, and I know that it has been mentioned in the, in the media, the Massachusetts Biotech Council recently awarded Burlington a platinum rating in efforts in the, in the life sciences field, which is great news. We essentially went from, from last to first here, we were hovering down there in, in the bronze neighborhood, and through the efforts of quite a few people, not the least of which are, are planning staff and planners, town meeting members who approved the recent zoning change to lab space and so on and so forth, the administration, we have gone to the platinum level, that is, it's the best you can get, and this is very, very important to our economic development plan that we have here in Burlington, this is an area where we've been focusing on, and, you know, having Miller porch with Burlington recently is, is evidence, evidence of that, so I just want to thank everyone involved who helped us attain that, that level through the Biotech Council, very important, they, they're, all their, all the folks in that life science industry are members of that, that council, and they rely on the information from there as to, you know, a good place to locate, a good place to do business, and now Burlington's right up there with, with the big fellows, the Cambridges, and even Lexington's had a platinum for, you know, for quite a few years, so thank you, thank you to everybody, and I'll leave it at that. Some of you have probably noticed a big void on the common, this year, the events on the common, and that is Truck Day. Truck Day is all over, last year was the last time for Truck Day, so I just, again, I wanna thank Alfie, Wally DeClos, and as others, I know Bob Compton, who passed a few years ago, all had put in an enormous amount of time and energy and effort for Truck Day, and they did a wonderful job, it blossomed into one of the premier events of, of the summer here in Burlington, so they're gonna be sadly missed, but thank you very much to everyone who was involved bringing us Truck Day for over twenty years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, just wanted to do a follow-up to it, something that Mike mentioned about the life sciences industry, how, you know, we're ready for it, we're prepared, just so that there's no misinformation, people say, oh, more business, come to Burlington, more traffic, more business, if life, if a life science business replaces a current business in Burlington, the impact on traffic will be less traffic, and the reason being is life sciences typically have few employees, the, the operation itself requires, you know, more open space as opposed to offices and cubicles, so it's not that we're gonna have an onslaught of all these new businesses, more traffic, if a life science business comes in and replaces a traditional Burlington business, it'll impact it for the better, and it, it should reduce traffic, because that's the nature of the business, less employees, but I just wanted to-
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Make a clarification, not clarification, follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to tack on to the whole life sciences conversation for a moment, this platinum status now makes us competitive with the communities surrounding us, so, you know, Bedford, Wilmington, Wilbur, even Tewksbury are all platinum status communities, so, you know, now we can, can tell that as well, which is, is very, very important, and, and to Jim's point, he's absolutely right, because of lab space, there would be fewer employees, therefore, you know, less impact on the community from that sense, and, you know, we, we have office space in the community that can be retrofitted to lab space, and, you know, with the zoning changes that came last year, and, you know, this platinum status, it's gonna allow us to attract, and not just be, you know, a big brochure key for the communities around us, right, who say, you know, we're in Bedford, come to us, and you can use Burlington's amenities, now it's, you know, hey, we have, Burlington has everything you need, come on, come on down. Tacking onto that, as we move forward with the, the search for our Economic Development Director, we'll be having meetings in the coming month as a hiring committee to look, to see who's applying for that, and starting that process forward, so very excited to participate in. The Sculpture Park Committee has been working tirelessly to figure out a plan to come before the board of selectmen, and then town meeting to seek some approval for sculptures, I know one that's a, that's a must is gonna be at Lifetime Fitness, there's the pad that's already there, and, and dollars that are already, have already been allocated, and I believe if I, if I saw my email correctly, there's already been a call put out to artists to start that process. If I'm speaking incorrectly, John Sachs, please, correct me. ISAC, I, I had a chance to attend the meeting that happened last week, great, a lot of smart people in that room, working really hard to look at, you know, the need of our information technology infrastructure from multiple levels, right, from, you know, the actual infrastructure itself all the way up to policy, and I'm very excited to be working with them, and, you know, as, as that progresses to the fall and into the winter, they'll be looking to come before us as well as to report what's going on, and to go to town meeting to report. It's a very, it's a very long process, because there's a lot of different pieces and movement parts that are involved in it, not just software and hardware, but just the logistics of how you maintain governance when it comes to, you know, digital information and the security of it, so it's very interesting. Just a couple of notices, everyone don't forget that next Monday is Columbus Day, so, you know, enjoy the long weekend if you got it, and then, you know, I think we only have one other meeting between now and, and Halloween, so I'll just start saying it, is, you know, you know, folks, if you're out driving in the community, come, come Halloween, keep your eyes peeled, you know, kids will be out trick-or-treating, I know there are tons of different, you know, events, like, you know, the, the trunk retreats that people do, and, you know, folks try to keep, you know, good eye on, on, you know, where they let their kids go, but, you know, when, when the sun goes down, you gotta be careful, so I urge everyone, you know, on Halloween night when you're driving, just, you know, an extra, extra note of caution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, real quick, couple things to go over, you've heard me say this, at some other times, today was opening day of hunting season in Massachusetts, so landlocked forests, there are hunters in there during the course of the day, just do what you gotta do, they know you're there, so just letting everyone know they're there. Secondly, I'm gonna say it wrong, I know I am, to all, how do you say it? To all the festival? The festival? It was attended by all of us, it was very nice, once again, I'd like to thank them for a gift that we- It was very nice, once again, I'd like to thank them for a gift that we got, it was a very nice painting done by the children. I think that everyone's gift had a name on it, someone, someone drew it professionally, or child-wise for us, it was, I love it, it's a beautiful, beautiful elephant, looks great. Once again, they did a, they did a nice job down there, the food trucks were great, the people were great, there was no incidents, there was no problems, very happy group of people, dancing and singing, and what else can we say about it? They were, they were wonderful. Thirdly, the last thing I have is, for the last two months, I've been promoting this PMC challenge that was held down the district, last, the same Sunday, actually, as the, as the festival, and the challenge went over very, very well. It raised over $90,000 in one day for its first, its first year, which is absolutely incredible. I'd figure 217 riders, I believe there were. It was packed, there was a cotton candy machine, there was bouncy houses, there were face painters, the cheerleaders were there, some of the foot, no, the hockey players, I think the hockey players, a couple of those kids showed up. It was just well, well-handled by everybody, so Jason and Christine, they did a great job, and the staff that was on there, they were wonderful, too. What can we say, down at the district, we could just say thank you. Alan was great, he, he did a great job, and Andrew Gollinaro, from the management company, he was, they were, they were just fantastic. So I just want to applaud everybody involved in that, that festival, that bike challenge, it was, it was great, so. And that's all I have, so we'll move right on to the Town Administration's report.
I just have a couple of quick ones, Mr. Chairman. Selectmen Priest mentioned the Economic Development Director Search Committee is, is starting up, and at the same time, I'll let you guys know that we posted the fire chief's job, so we'll be starting up those, those interviews within the next couple of weeks, with the goal towards interviewing internal candidates first, so we'll be starting up with that. Another point to note is, the Townwide Flu Clinic is going to be on October 26, Saturday, from noon to 3:00 at the Memorial School, for any residents that want to come down and get their flu shots. I do believe that the Board of Health has made four, I think what they call vulnerable groups, seniors and children, you can go make an appointment at the Board of Health to get a flu shot at any time, I believe, but the details are on their website. But the Townwide Flu Clinic, the big event, is October 26.
Fantastic. There was, there was one quick thing I forgot that I'd like to say about the festival, that I would like to congratulate one of our selectmen, he is now the Jimmy Jingle Award, he did a great job with that. I just want to say thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
So we'll go to citizens' time. Nobody here? Open and close that quickly. You're not a citizen? You are, just north of this town. This young man is with the newspaper.
He's from the press.
I'm sorry, he's from the press. Which shop?
Patch.
Patch. The Patch, he was, we met him, town meeting, the night of town meeting, you wrote with your, with your, with your injury.
And what's his name?
Chris.
Chris, nice to meet you.
So I think we're ready to-
I know you.
-make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, any second. All those in favor? Aye. Good night. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.